All right, in the last slide. Reopen the meeting.
Ms. Jane?
I'll make a motion to reconvene the meeting.
Oh, sorry, second. Ms. Jane?
Yes.
Ms. Deming?
Aye.
Ms. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Rising?
Yes.
Okay, we'll go back into our topic here.
All right, so in summary.
Oh, Mr. DeBrocker, if you, because of when you were cut off, if you can just go back just a little bit, because I think we were, there was a lot of noise and everything happening, and I don't, I don't want us to miss the important information from what you were talking about. Thank you.
There we go. So, the last SIP day, April 26th, close to the end of the school year, we focused on common belief grading practices. We had a student panel in our auditorium, which was very well organized. They were very open, honest about retakes, grading practices, all kinds of different things that we can continue to work on as a school. And then the restorative practices, the training that we received with Dr. Najjar and the leadership team, myself and one of my assistant principals presented in the commons on how we believe the restorative practices can have a positive impact on Matia when it comes to SEL, discipline, and overall classroom instruction. And then we continued throughout the day. You'll see discussion of equity sessions, roaming the range, AI lessons, and then departmental focus and goals to finish strong. So that was our last SIP day of the year. So to recap, kind of the summary of the 23-24 school year of equity in action, some of the major highlights. Again, I'd like to reiterate that it's a constant work within our building, within our walls, within our equity team, continuing to push our staff to do what's best for our students and remove those barriers for equity. So student development, investment in staff, engagement in the community, and optimizing resources are those goals within the equitable lens in our, as a school board. So we host what we call Lunch and Learns. We support lunch with our Aramark, our organic life supports lunch for our staff. We had six different equity Lunch and Learns that also included EL strategies and how we can continue to support our EL community, which has grown from 60 students pre-pandemic to now over 300 students with, at Matia specifically. Four instructional tech include, that was, was very focused on that culturally responsive instruction framework. Two included student voice activities, and then my personal favorite, I put a bias in there, I apologize, but staff and students sat there as I ate lunch in the corner, and they were discussing equitable grading practices over test retakes. And I was, it was amazing just to see the interactions and the conversations to continue to push us moving forward for those equitable grading practices. We, our instructional tech coaches actually created what we call roaming the range, where us as the leaders take our staff supervision times during a day and allow our staff to observe other teachers with a specific focus of student empowerment. Teacher wellness, talking about investment in staff. I actually have a classmate of mine from '97 at Potavia High School, shout out to Carly Jacks. Now Carly Quick, she is amazing. She ate, she was a social worker for 20 years, and she changed her profession to teacher wellness coordinator. So she goes around the state of Illinois with a group of other new professionals that focus on teacher wellness and professional development. So I met with her a couple of weeks ago, and we will continue to utilize her resources, strategies, and practices for teacher wellness and taking care of themselves throughout the school year and getting feedback through that. So we're systematic way of continuing that this school year. And then restorative practices. Like I said, we talked about restorative circles, defining relationships, and how it can impact Matia specifically. And then two things that I know we're going to roll out into next year, I'll start from the bottom, is just a continued emphasis and supports on professional development from funding within my building budget. And we created a professional development library. So we ask our staff, if they do go on any professional development that has anything to do with us getting better at what we do in educating our kids, tied to equity or not, that they bring that back, submit it, and we create a library for our staff. So again, lean and mean and continuing to work together for all of that. And then we're going to do so many, many more teacher pop-ins. All of our leaders will have at least three teachers every single week assigned to them, and they'll pop in their classroom with a specific focus. It might be relationships, it might be restorative circles, anything that they're looking to identify, the teachers will know that. And then we will invite them to a Friday optional meeting, again, emphasis on relationships. I believe it's going to be important for my leadership team to model that and continue to have those expectations for our staff to grow their equitable lens for us to continue to do what's best for our students. And that was it. Any questions?
Ms. Deming?
This was extremely beneficial, you know, to hear the actual practice from a, from an academic and from a practical standpoint. So we do, we've done a lot of the conversations, and we have a lot of the strategy, but to have a little bit of the discussion of what this looks like actually in the, in schools is really helpful. I will be so interested as we move forward in discussing our work within the district to see what this looks like at our different two other levels, and would really love at some point to even have a student and, and a teacher present us from, from that lens as well. One of the things that I was so, that I really appreciate as we take a look at our equity ambassadors is just having a chance to see every, you know, the difference and the diversity that, that we look like. I wonder, from a standpoint of Matia, can you share a little bit of what, you know, when we talk about our students, what does that look like? And I just want to specifically, I want to be very specific, because often, all right, I don't want to say often. I feel sometimes, especially when we talk about EDI work, there can be the perception that we're strictly talking about black versus white or African-American and Latino, and that that's, that that's truly what EDI is. I think one of the great things that we've done here is look at the expansiveness and that it's not just a racial lens, and that it impacts us in so many different ways. I especially appreciate the mental health conversations and inclusiveness here because it's critical. Can you share a little bit, when we look at the students that are involved in some of the things that we've discussed, can you share what that lens, how do students decide to be involved in anything, I don't know, characteristics that, that you may be able to share?
Yeah, I think, just like you said, I don't think equity is going to just identify a group and then we have to attack that concern. I think just overall systematically, we are going to put things in place to remove barriers for all of our students. I think that's also the, one of the largest challenges we have. I had a parent ask me the other day, his son plays basketball with my son, and it's like, what are the biggest challenges for you? And as a principal of the school, and I, and my immediate answer is just continuing to find resources to break down those walls for what our students need. And that changes from building the building, from school to school, from year to year, based on what we identify on all of those surveys. But when we're talking about the characteristics of the student voice, that could be the data of showing if they belong, and if, and if they don't feel like they belong, then we dive into, we had 92% say, I feel like I belong, or kind of belong, which we thought was, okay, that's really good. That 8%, then why? Why don't they feel like they belong when they walk into the building? And the importance of that. Are our teachers not potentially maybe using their name consistently? Are we not doing something that we can continue to grow as, as professionals to support some of these students? So identifying that why, I think, is really important when we are trying to figure out what those needs might be. And that's that one slide that had all of those different things that we look into. And then we have to narrow down and create a couple of goals for, for our SIP plan for that year. And working with Dr. Howard, it's kind of like, every single year, we can do that, but we really need to establish that work for one, two, three, four years to really have that impact as we work through it. But I think when we talk about feeling they belong, the SEL, the mental health, they need to feel connected in some fashion. There was a student getting a tour the other day. I introduced myself, and I said, are you coming from a smaller school? And she's like, yeah, like 300 students total. And she was walking the building, big-eyed, and I just said, find, find, make this large school smaller. Find who, who you can connect with, what your interests are. Connect with an adult, that's what's something really important. And so the work that we do is a consistent showing of what that SIP plan is, but it's all from that different feedback, if, if I'm answering your question. But I don't think it's identifying one thing specifically. I think it's just how we operate. As Dr. Najjar said, he wanted me to present all these things that we are doing, and we, I lived all of that, but there's still more, more work to do.
I, I love that, and I, I like the, the one thing that I so like, that we were very intentional about is recognizing that this is embedded. This is not an, this is not an add-on. This is something that is part of our culture, and, and it's so critical for everybody to find their place within the realm of 204. So.
Yeah.
Thank you so much. That's all I have.
Ms. Fostick?
Thank you. I really enjoyed seeing also what you're doing specifically at the school level. So, Mr. DeBrocker, I'm really thankful that you were able to share how you're able to do that with your staff. And I love seeing the student voice involved in there. That's great. Because that's who we're here to serve, right? I mentioned to Dr. Najjar, and I think in my mind now, I'm adding it every time I see equity. You know, his, his title is Assistant Superintendent of Equity and Innovation. I think of innovation as growth to be better.
Mm-hmm.
And so in my mind, those are, those are perfectly linked.
Yep.
And so anytime I see equity here, and for all of our students, it's growth to be better. So the fact that it's so deeply embedded in what we do makes me, as a, even more proud to be part of a district that really makes sure that we value growth in all ways for our students and our staff and our community as a whole. And I'm wondering if, at the high school level specifically, I know CAC is at, at NIQA. Have there, do you know of plans to maybe continue a club like that in the other schools? Or maybe grow them, or grow a district-wide club?
Yeah, I think, I think we do a really good job. I can just only speak for Matia. We have an Elevate Club as well. I think it's, it's more women's empowerment is how they define what Elevate is at our building. But I, I don't see a glaring gap of something that we're missing, and if we do, it's going to come from the students. We have so many clubs and organizations and groups that are, are meeting and constantly having an impact. And some of the, being authentic and them seeing themselves in the curriculum and them seeing themselves in what we do at Matia, that's something that I, some of the student voice conversations that I've had, and I challenge them to be like, they, I, I don't want them to just rely on us to celebrate what they're doing. I'm asking their feedback, meeting with the students, and be like, how can we continue to find a representation of whatever your concern is or what you want to see more at the halls of Matia Valley? And so some of the best things that we've had the last couple of years are student-driven. Have the student voice, that they're planning it, and us as adults are supporting them through that. Because I can't create a celebration for something that I have zero knowledge on, zero background or understanding. Why, how am I going to sit there and do it? Or my activities director, they've never experienced that. So the students are very open and honest and talk through that, those opportunities. And some of those student panels are wonderful, but I will also say challenging for our staff, because some of the students will be very clear on the way they feel about maybe this department doing this, or how we do this. But it also is the most important feedback that we can work with when it comes to us getting better at what we do for them.
Absolutely.
And can I add? When I first saw what CAC did at NIQA, I thought, oh, it's copy and paste and put it in the other schools. And then realized, I, I think I was thinking one day, and I, I saw some signage in Matia. Mr. DeBrocker, I think, had been approved as the, the new principal, and Dr. Echols was finishing up his year. And I think you spent a whole day or a week with all these different student organizations. They were meeting with you in the forum room and telling you what they wanted at Matia with the next principal. So we realized, like, the student voice piece was there in some of the student government organizations you have. And so I think it, it's not about just copying and pasting from one to another, but seeing what the needs are. And I think we also have a wonderful opportunities with our assistant activities directors, which is a newer position that we've created here at the district, where now they can kind of collaborate and see, what do you have, what can we borrow, how can we work together to do something either at the district-wide level? So like what we're doing with the activities directors now, they're planning this next Amplify Conference with the other districts, and then also what can they do at their own kind of local level.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Mr. Rising?
First couple of questions I have are, you can answer pretty simply unless you choose to answer longer, because I know there can be long answers. I guess the first question, Dr. Najjar, and I apologize if I'm simplifying or asking these questions a little too direct, but I think what we're hearing in society about diversity, equity, inclusion needs to be explained better. So I guess my first question is, has our main focus of educating our students to the best of our ability changed because of our equity work in any way?
No.
Okay. Does equity work take away from learning or instructional time of our students?
No.
It's my understanding, for the most part, a lot of the equity work with our staff, and, you know, maybe even, Mr. DeBrocker, you can even chime in on this one. A lot of the equity work is basically extra tools in the tool bag that we're giving our teachers or our staff members to better connect with students and help them learn better in the school environment. Would that be a fair statement? I mean, with the equity work?
Yeah, to put the last two questions together for you, I don't think it's taking any time away from the instruction. I think it is creating more relevant instruction for our students. I think if the students can see themselves in the curriculum in some, in some way, shape, or form, and also feel connected to the instructor in building relationships, that's a huge part of that as well. I, true story, I went to Panera for dinner before I got here, and two students from another high school, and I won't say which one, we're literally talking about a teacher. And one of the students said, I just wish that teacher would just be more themselves, because I see a different side of them when they coach us. If they were like that in the classroom, I think it would be a better course, or whatever that might be. And I'm just like, there's the example right there. So I think this work, when we talk about using students' names in the class and building relationships with those students and pronouncing the name correctly, all of those things matter. If a student doesn't feel that, that the teacher is there, connected, feels them, and it's not just the teacher's work, it's our work in the building, all of us trying to create that environment for our students that they feel like they belong, that they're seen in what we do in our building, then the, the chances of success skyrocket.
And then regarding restorative practices, again, I think it's something that is frequently misrepresented. And I'll tell you what my understanding is, and maybe you can just clarify. My understanding of restorative practices is basically you look at what the needs of the school community are. You build healthy relationships between the educators, the teachers, the staff, and the students. You know, you reduce and prevent as best you can and improve harmful behaviors that might happen within the school environment. You repair the harm, restore positive relationships, and resolve conflict, and hold individuals and groups accountable. Is that a good description of restorative practices?
Let me take that one?
Yeah, I believe that's, that's a good description. I think maybe an easy way to tie it together, and also maybe with equitable grading practices, because we're talking about that too, is how do we move past being punitive, right? Every, everything we do in school is about wanting to see growth and developing a growth mindset and ensuring that our, our kids get it. And so the same thing when we're trying to change behavior, it's not just about being punitive, right? How do we restore? How do we repair? How do we get you to not make that mistake again? It doesn't mean that you're going to not make that mistake again, but how do we show that we're actually trying and that we care about those things?
And it doesn't mean also, in the, in the way of restorative, it doesn't mean that we're still not punishing kids. And as far as equitable grading, it doesn't mean that we're making grading any easier, correct?
Yeah, it doesn't mean that we're softballing anything. It just means that we're being intentional around allowing students to grow and ensuring that we're following research-based best practices. That's another thing with all the work that we do in the district is rooted in research. It's not just, you know, what's popular on Twitter, or, you know, what bandwagon to jump on, but really what's best for students and based, rooted in research.
Then, so when I was preparing for this, and by the way, people can look at our equity plan, and I encourage them to, at ipsd.org/equity. When I was looking at this presentation, and then I was thinking about our mission statement, inspire all students to achieve their greatest potential. You know, I broke that up to inspire all students achieve their greatest potential. I broke it up in three, and, you know, there's a lot of what we do with our equity work and our equity statement that's wrapped into our mission statement. You know, when you look at inspiring, that's making students love learning. It's, it's, it's encouraging our staff to connect with our students. It's making that welcome, safe, respectable, respected, valued environment for our students. It's that portrait of the graduate as far as resilience goes and flexibility, adaptability, creativity, creative thinking. All of those things is inspiring. All students, the reality is, we have to educate all students. And all students learn in a different way than they did when my kids started in the district in 2001. When I look back to when I was first a board member in 2011, and over 60% of our district was Caucasian and white, and now 34% of our district is, is white, you know? So we have to look at all students, and we can be, we can create our, we can treat all our students equally, but not all our students learn in the same way. And, and my example of that is, both my kids had IEPs. And if they weren't given extra help, extra support, because of the struggles and the challenges that they had.
Bless you.
They wouldn't have been able to succeed. And that's equity. That's equity in education, is helping students, no matter where they are or what their needs are. And that's why this is important to all students. And then achieve their greatest potential. I mean, there's a reason why we're a top 50 district in the country. There's a reason why Naperville has been rated the number one community since 2018 for public schools. It's because that we make our kids feel welcomed, and we always focus on them doing as best as they can academically. So thank you for all the work you're doing.
Ms. Jane? My colleagues ask such good questions. I just want to commend both of you in the way you've articulated what I think to be is somewhat of a complex concept and menu, and for many people to understand, including, including myself in my own equity journey and understanding and what that means. I, I think both of you articulated so well that it's not a destination, that it's constant, that it's embedded in everything that we do, and really beautifully discussed what, what does it mean to have an equity lens. Specifically, I, on slide seven, when you talked about the mental health symposium, I was, this was the first time I was able to attend it, and I just wanted to share a, a personal observation. One service that we provided at the symposium was for parents who didn't speak English. They would, they could have headphones with, with a translator nearby and hear in, in live the translation of the presenters. And I was watching these parents taking all this information, and it was, yes, a service we provided, but it made a world of difference to those parents sitting in that room. And I, I just, I sat with such pride in that moment, that we, we gave that opportunity to our diverse community, and that was just a moment that stood out to me. Slide number nine. Dr. Najjar, the examples you provided here, we taught, we've been hearing this phrase, culturally responsive teaching. What does it mean? When you read the language on the slide, again, it, it sounds really good, right? But what does that mean? How do you operationalize it? I really appreciate the examples you provided, the very specific ones, because I think that's when, when people hear and like, oh, yeah, that's good teaching. Yeah, that's what, that's what my good teacher did, right? So it just made it so much more understandable. And the other last thing that I wanted to comment on that I appreciated was on slide 13. You mentioned having a sustain, a sustain, sustainability committee. As well as on slide 23, you talked about having a professional development library. These two things also, I just wanted to applaud, applaud you on, because this work is hard, and we don't want to lose it. And so if others can benefit from it and reexamine it, that's, that's wonderful. So all in all, thank you for your work.
I want to thank the communications team, the mental health symposium. I think all of, almost all the sessions, the videos are up on the website. So another amazing resource that we were able to capture, and people who weren't able to go there can visit, or you can revisit, which I did myself personally.
Well, thank you for all of your work, and it was really interesting to hear, like, from the high school perspective, the things that have been implemented. This is something that we want to make sure continues to be embedded in our culture across our learning. I agree with a lot of the, I started counting how many times we were talking about relationships and building relationships. It's like fundamental. Like, no, no one is inspired to learn in an environment where they don't have a relationship or a belonging that they feel for that school. And it's, it's key to making our students successful in the academic realm, that they have that nurturing and that accommodation so that they feel like they are part of a, a community that's important to them, and they're important to us. So thank you for the comments from all of my colleagues, too. I know, Mark, sometimes the questions are hard to ask, but there is a lot of chatter about DEI, and is it taking away from academics? And is restorative justice causing kids to act bad in schools? And it's like, no, listen to the talk. I'll tell people, go back and look at the charts, and these are tools that help our students succeed. And, you know, I, I welcome the work that's being done and continue to grow it. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Last thing is legislative advocacy and Board of Education update.
So, thank you, President Donahue. I did share with everyone the proposal that Board Member Fostick and I had submitted to IASB was a belief statement, or what we had hoped was a belief statement. And we were apprised that there are no longer belief statements. I think they ended belief statements probably the last time that we submitted one, which was in '21 or '22. So we brought up a, a sort of new idea that, that they're going to have to try and figure out with the, with IASB directors. And there is, they have what they term a core advocacy delegation, and they look at, I said core advocacy, advocacy core values. And those are, were adopted by the Board of Directors of IASB, sort of helping to guide fundamental base, basic tenants for them and for us to look at considering. And so they really see this moving much more into a core value conversation. They don't have a way to have those brought to the Board of Directors as of yet. So what was proposed is that, because it's not a resolution, and so we and so we didn't want to move forward on that, on that end. So I shared with the two directors that we would bring this back to our board and ask for approval to submit this, for it to be submitted to the Board of Directors, IASB Board of Directors, Directors, for them to begin to consider how can people bring advocacy core value type sentiments to be considered? And so that's what Board Member Fostick and I would like.
Specifically in the form of a letter is what, what was recommended as something to submit and for their consideration.
Remind the audience what the belief statement was about.
The belief statement is about including student voice.
The importance of that.
Yes, absolutely. I'm trying to pull it up here to see if we have it to share in this collection of emails that we've got.
Let me see if I can find it. So I'm, while you're looking, I mean, this again continues our pattern of activism in the state with pushing for policies and changes that benefit public schools and being very active with IASB. We also had our presentation proposal accepted by IASB. So we'll be presenting at the conference and we've presented the last, I don't know, four years or something, yeah. So important work for us in pushing forward an agenda that helps public schools progress to the future. Did you find it?
I did, I can share it. What we drafted together was the Illinois Association of School Boards believes that local boards of education benefit from student perspectives, leading to more inclusive and effective educational policies. Therefore, we encourage local boards to actively invite, pursue and cultivate student voice at the board level.
So good work and again, yes, innovative.
I'm so confused by this.
IASB, yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I believe this happened in 2022 because in 2021, I emailed you all the resolution reports for 2021. They still had the belief statements in there. I just pulled up the 2023 resolution report and I'm looking at their advocacy core values. It's disappointing because those original 13 belief statements, I, I think we were part of developing four of those 13 for the whole state of Illinois. Where the heck are those? Like, I mean, great that we're, I mean, great that you want our direction right now on the, the student advocacy part of being part of, uh, uh, school boards looking at that across the state. But I have a bigger issue of where did all these belief statements go?
The, the Delegate Assembly voted in 2022 to remove the belief statements.
So they no longer exist?
They no longer exist.
Well, then...
It seems like they have some core values.
Exactly. Right, and the advocacy core values, it seems like, it seems as if they may be recreated as a simpler belief statement process?
Oh, it's, it's, but it's, it's disappointing. I mean, there was a whole page of belief statements and they summarized it in five bullet points. You know, I would like to talk once we get to the part, because I know you have to focus on this now because the date has passed for resolutions. But as we get that resolution report and as you go to the Delegate Assembly, I, I would like us to talk as a board of maybe you making a, a comment in front of the Delegate Assembly of, of where did some of these things go? I mean, because they were so very important to the work we do as school boards across the state. And they exist, I, I mean, I'd have to go back and cross-check and cross-reference all those belief statements, but I don't believe they exist in any existing position statements or, or resolutions in, in, in the state. So, yeah, I, I mean, it's, it's disappointing. But I think you just needed our direction tonight and I think you got that for the most part.
Yeah.
Yeah, we should, we should definitely have a discussion.
We do need to push a bigger agenda with them.
Because we did have quite a, we did have quite a bit of input on, on a number of belief statements that were accepted.
Yeah, I mean, we did safe and secure environments and, you know, you know, not being trauma responsive and some of the, I mean, a bunch of, yeah, the equity thing, I mean...
I think my voter thing was in one of them.
Voter registration.
I mean, there was a lot of things that we did in the past 10 years.
So I think more to come on this, but you know, move forward with the student one. It's such a, a good initiative, so, yeah.
Perfect, thank you. Board Member Fostick and I will work on getting that communication submitted.
So are there any other items to discuss? Otherwise it's thundering again out there. I need a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
I'll, I'll in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?